Good afternoon, welcome to all of you. At this time, I'd like to ask if you're able to rise and join us in the pledge to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, today is Wednesday, April 17. Let's have a cold order, please.
Brad Kent?
Here.
Sean Brewster?
Here.
Pete Hamel?
Here.
Tom Eggers?
Here.
All right, you have the agendas in front of you. Any changes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
There is a change?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to add an item towards the end for acknowledged receipt of the petitions for the special mayoral election.
Okay.
And we will also be talking about, it might be an older draft, the other one in front of me. We amended the agenda yesterday to include an update on the appointment for the special council.
Yes.
For the council vacancy. There you go.
There we go. So with those changes, is there a motion approved? So much.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Eggers?
Hi.
Kent?
Hi.
Hamel?
Hi.
Brewster?
Hi.
Motion carried. All right, at this time, we have time for public comments. Is there anyone that would like to step up to the mic and address the council? Dennis, welcome. Yep, up to the mic so we can hear you. We will hear you, it's more when you're on TV that they'll hear you.
Okay. My name is Dennis Hoxburgh. I'm, I own the land just west of the new wastewater treatment plant that's being built. Right now, I have all that land on the west side and the east side of the river. That's all in CRP. And what I'm, I'm in the, my midterm management plan is to do some kind of a burn or, you know, something for the midterm plan. And just looking at it the last couple of weeks after the flooding, everything that's going on, right now, I would like to burn it because of all of the natural barriers that are out there right now. River being one, but especially to the south, all the land there is bean field right now. You know, I know it's gonna get planted in corn, so as far as burning in a fall is, yeah, way, way more dangerous. Anything to the east, the side hill right now that goes up to the bike path, that's all short, green grass. You know, there's so many different natural barriers there that it would be very nice to be able to burn now rather than something later. And I have met with NRCS quite a few different times and went to a couple of meetings on the burn plan and talked with some of the people there about it. I talked with the fire chief in Sheldon here, talked with him about it and, yeah, yeah, just different things like that. Just, I guess, just wondering, yeah, what, you know, there'd be, have to be a lot of different things that would have to be just right, you know. The wind would definitely have to be right. Either it had to be a north or northeast wind to be able to do it, and light wind. And I would definitely have a lot of people helping control the burn also.
Okay. So are you, is this your formal request for approval?
Yes, that's, yeah. I'm doing it, yeah, formal request for approval because, yeah, you really don't know, you know, I can't set a date or a time or anything where there's morning or evening or, you know, it's more dictated by the weather.
And it's within the city limits, so us council has to okay the burn. And I know I visited with Denny last night about it and he's okay with it. The only thing that we ask is, when he does it, is to call Sioux County, because that's the county he's in, and then also let O'Brien County know, because with the day and age of cell phones, they get called in relatively fast. And that way, we wouldn't be chasing out there for it. They would know ahead of time.
Okay.
So this is an item that the council could, you know, by consensus, you know, but it's not an item that's on the agenda, so, you know, the last two burn permissions have been put on the agenda and voted on. Ordinance doesn't require that. And Todd and I talked about this yesterday, that because the last two or three came to the council, it is best that Dennis come and, and ask. And if there's concern, then this can be actually put on the agenda and voted on at the next meeting. If you're okay with it, I think by consensus, you can proceed, especially because ordinance doesn't specifically require a council vote.
I guess I would defer to the fire department approval of the approval, and I'm fine with it.
Yeah, Denny, I visited with Denny last night and he also has looked at it, and I've kind of driven out by it and we're, he's okay with it.
Okay. Sean, how do you feel about it?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Tom?
Sounds like you've done all the risk management, so that's good.
Okay. So by consensus, I guess, with what we've discussed, you've got our approval.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, moving forward, the consent agenda is before you. Any items you would like to list separately? If not, a motion to approve, please.
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Hi.
Eggers?
Hi.
Kent?
Hi.
Hamel?
Hi.
Thank you. Moving forward, old business, update on the HC Lane building. Who's gonna speak first?
Go ahead, Rod.
Mr. Representative, your name?
Rod Funkert, manager of the Lane Properties, Action Real Estate. Wayne Schlofeld and L&amp;K Construction have been working together on the alley issue. That's supposed to be taken care of. So, and I have no reason to believe it isn't. That wall is 16 inches wide, and other than the back plaster on it, that was done 20 years ago, or 50 years ago, that wall's in good shape, except the west end. The west eight feet of that, okay, I wasn't there when they built the building. I'm old, but not that old. That area leads into what I believe was an alley, because it's got a dirt floor and it goes all the way to the front of the building. It looks to me like that was one of those afterthoughts. There's a wood door in there someplace. And that's gonna come out, but we're waiting, Wayne is coming up with the amount of a steel beam to put across there and then pour concrete underneath it, so.
Okay.
When that happens, I don't know, but, yeah, as far as I'm concerned, as far as L&amp;K is concerned and Wayne, there's no problem. When they start taking that out, they have to be careful, of course, but that wall's not gonna cave in. There are headers in there already, but they will have to come out and then the steel beam go in there. So, that's kind of the plan on that. The center beam, the center pole, I graduated from high school in 1962 and that clerk stand was there. Yep, it needs a pole there, but it's been out of there for longer than I know. And first, we have to get the roof to dry up and then that'll all be fixed.
Okay. So in terms of what's been accomplished so far, what, what did they do? Did they shore the wall up?
Shoreed the wall, yes.
All right.
If you have a question, you may call Larry Klein-Hesling. He said there's not a chance it'll fall.
Rod, just a couple of things. Is Wayne Schlofeld able to give us a letter that authorizes the reopening or lesses the reopening of the alley?
Um, yeah, I imagine it would.
His initial letter in this report backed it up, is that the rear wall is at moderate risk for collapse.
I sent you the word, whoops, I didn't send to Dan Wood. You have that, don't you?
Yeah.
Okay. It says in there, um...
The fourth paragraph down on the second page says there's moderate chance the wall or portions of the wall could collapse and fall.
That's the area of that eight foot.
Right.
West end. And that's been shored up. So, yeah, I would think he would give us a letter. I didn't ask for one, because I didn't think we needed it. Or Larry Klein-Hesling would give it, or Wayne would do it. It's just another hundred bucks.
Todd, maybe you can help me out on this, but my thinking out loud here, it seems that the best course of action would be is to authorize reopening the alley only upon having an engineer stamp on a letter that it has been sufficiently shored up and is no longer at moderate risk for collapse.
That seems fair and appropriate to me. I'm not, I mean, I'm not an engineer or a structural person. I'm not gonna say that the shoring that Mr. Funkert speaks of is, is either adequate or inadequate enough to open the alley. Bywood with some sand on it, but what that does or doesn't do to hold the bricks up is not my determination.
I would assume that whoever said it needed it should be the one that should say that it's been taken care of. So I assume that's Schlofeld. Seems to make sense to me.
Yeah, if we could, if we could just get some validation from, from them to do that. We'd like to get the alleyway open.
I can't stand here and give it to you right now, because I don't have it.
We'd like to get the alleyway open as soon as we can.
No problem. I'll call them in the morning.
Cool.
Or I'll call them when I leave right now.
Sure. I think we get that, then I think we can move forward and have taken down the barricades, so.
I know, they discussed it together, so.
Yeah, well, I'm sure everything's fine, it's just, I think, it's good protocol to follow, Rod. We appreciate you getting on that and getting it taken care of, so.
I've been managing those buildings for over 30 years, and they are in, Wayne even says they're in good shape. Now, there's two problems, big deal.
Looks like we got it taken care of, or in the process, getting it taken care of, so that's the intent, so.
What's the timeframe on getting these repairs done?
Have you ever hired a contractor?
Absolutely.
And how did, how did that work for you?
But I'm asking you, we have a building here with issues, what's the timeframe?
I would assume that Larry will get right on it, but you gotta have the weather.
I understand that.
You know, last week, you couldn't do nothing.
I understand that.
Okay.
But I think we need to have a date when these repairs are done.
Well, it says 90 days.
A notice has been sent and received that required all the repairs to be finished within 90 days. The shoring up was to be done by 4:30 today, and Mr. Funkert is reporting that that issue has been addressed, and obviously, we'll need some verification, but those were the timelines in the notice.
And if we need more time, we'll come back and say, hey, can't do it by then, you know, how that works.
You've made good effort now, I think, as long as you're, you know, moving forward, making efforts, we'd like to get it taken, we'd all like to see it taken care of as possible, so.
It just didn't come overnight. The risk has been brewing for years.
But now that we've given a directive, he's complying, so.
And is the city council gonna go through every building now downtown? I've been through O'Mall almost over the years, and it's kind of a bad issue you guys are stirring up. There's a lot of pride of ownership out there, and to walk somebody through that has no knowledge of Sheldon, no knowledge of the buildings, is ludicrous. It's a bad thing for Sheldon, it's a bad thing, what we need is population. You can't, can't charge enough rent to care for the building, and that's plain, pure, and simple. We've run into that problem for 40 years and 50 years, and it's gonna continue that way. Unless we take care of the downtown and, and get some population here and have people understand that shopping locally is really, really important, because if you don't, the merchant can't pay enough rent to pay for the, I put back steps on one of the buildings, 2,500 bucks, on a $400 rent. Can't do that every year. And that's one of the battles we fight in Sheldon, Iowa. And LaMars is going through it, Sibley is really bad going through it, but, and of course, Ashton is nothing, can't even buy a loaf of bread there anymore. That's because of the bypass. The people, it's really easy to go shopping in Sioux City, get on the bypass and 45 minutes you're there. And I've been there. When we can buy something locally, that's where it's done. And it's really unbelievably important that somehow we advise the people or get them to understand that shopping locally is so terribly important. It's not just for them, it's for the merchant, and it's not because the merchant's making a lot of money, because they aren't. If you walked up and down the street and said, would you sell your business, 80% of them would say, yeah, you got the money. But that's because we gotta have people shopping here. When Wolf's was there, it was the shopping center of Northwest Iowa. They're gone. But the only thing that's gonna help Sheldon is to get population. And so, anything you can do for that part of it is really important. Okay? Any questions for me?
If I might, Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. I think one, it's important to clarify that we had received concerns from tenants and former tenants who had pretty good knowledge of the building, and we had a responsibility to follow up. I have a list of properties that I'm working on in town, and it's a very large list, ranges from dangerous building issues to cars parking on lawns, and getting a very good response from, from people. And I also appreciate, Rod, I know I've perhaps been frustrating to deal with, but you've returned my calls, and we've had a number of good visits, and I appreciate the efforts that you are making to rectify this situation. I did receive a letter this afternoon that Cory Elversma and Wayne Knapp asked me to present to the council, and ensure it was in the public record, and if I might, Mr. Mayor, I'll take a moment to do that. It says, "Good afternoon, I have the building at 914 Fourth Avenue owned by Wayne Knapp listed for sale," which is the nature of this email. "Mr. Knapp nor I will be able to attend the council meeting today and wanted me to pose a question. At the current time, Mr. Knapp's building is vacant, but there had been some interest in purchase as well as rent of the building." This is the former Eagles Club. "In regard to these reports from Schlofeld and the Fire Marshal, is it considered safe to have an occupant or tenant in 914 Fourth Avenue? Would the fall zone extend onto or over 914 Fourth? Would there be a concern for patrons using the east entrance of 914 Fourth Avenue? And then lastly, in regard to the fall zone, would this extend out onto Fourth Avenue? Should Fourth Avenue between 9th and 10th Street really be open to traffic today along with the sidewalks? With the height of the Lane Building, it seems the fall zone will be quite a bit larger space than what it is currently barricaded off. If that is true, then we should be evac, should we be evacuating and barricading in a larger area? Or should we remove the barricades altogether if there is not a real, true concern for public safety? It seems unrealistic to think a building of that size is going to fall inside the barricades, so either we have a real concern and should act appropriately, or remove the barricades and carry on as we were. We look forward to your advice. Best regards, Cory Elversma on behalf of Mr. Wayne Knapp."
Well, I would assume that as soon as we get some kind of notification from Schlofeld, that we can take the barricades down and it's over. So that's all contingent upon that happening.
This is a suggested motion, I'll read it. If you want to approve it as it is or change it, you feel free to do that. A motion to authorize the reopening of the alley upon a written report by the property manager's engineer that the rear wall is safe. And then also, the second part of that motion, we would ask the city attorney to proceed with the enforcement process. I guess my question is, what does that entail that hasn't already happened?
I think it's continuing on the same path that we're on for X-MeCa.
It's the 90 days.
Yeah, allowing the 90-day clock continues, in other words.
Okay.
So you're looking for someone for a motion on that?
Yes.
I'd make that motion.
Okay.
Support.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kent?
Hi.
Hamel?
Hi.
Eggers?
Hi.
Brewster?
Hi.
Motion carried. All right, let's move on to new business here. This time, Ashley, I'm gonna invite you forward, she's gonna give us a presentation on service line warranties, and then we'll have an opportunity for some questions, discussion, and perhaps direction.
Perfect. Well, thank you all for having me here this evening. My name is Ashley Shaworski, and I represent the National League of Cities Service Line Program. Our service line program is the only one that's endorsed by the National League of Cities, but also here in Iowa by the Iowa League of Cities as well. The company, though, that I actually work for is called Utility Service Partners, and we administer the program. And we are a Better Business Bureau business with an A-plus rating, as well as we did win the Torch Award for Marketplace Ethics from the Better Business Bureau. So that is something that we're very proud of and are always striving to maintain that high level of ethical standards while conducting business. But what our program really is designed to do is to help address the public policy issue of aging infrastructure. We know that cities like yours all across the United States really are doing their part to either upgrade or maintain their public infrastructure, but the homeowners' portion of these lines were kind of being forgotten about. So that's really why the National League of Cities went out and did research. They wanted to make a program like ours readily and easily available to cities and towns all across the United States. So they went out, did the research on your behalf, and we were the company that they did choose to provide this program. So what we would do is, we would partner with the city in order to make our completely optional program available to the residents, and we provide homeowners with protection on their external water lines, external sewer lines, as well as their in-home plumbing. And we always provide these services with a complete turnkey approach for your city, where we handle all the aspects of the program, the marketing, the billing, the claims management, and customer service. And there is absolutely no cost to the city if you choose to participate in our program, and the city would receive an incremental revenue stream for their participation as well. What I always think is the best benefit of our program is that it simply helps to raise awareness. Pretty much every city that I speak with, I hear the same type of thing, that when a resident does have some type of issue with one of their external lines, typically, their first call is to someone here at the city. And then you all end up not only using your time, but dollars, sending someone out to determine that the resident, or that the issue is actually on the resident's piece of that water or sewer line. And then someone here is left being that unfortunate bearer of bad news, telling a homeowner that these lines are not covered by the city or typically by their homeowner's insurance. So that's really why I think of our program as a free public awareness campaign, because all of the residents would receive a letter in the mail, and the beginning of that letter is simply an educational piece, letting a homeowner know exactly what their service line responsibility is, even has a little diagram showing what we're talking about, and that the city has partnered with us to make this program available to them. So that way, even if one of your residents choose not to enroll, at least in the future, they are well aware of what their service line responsibility is, and that the city really tried to take a proactive approach at helping to educate them of this. Also, a huge benefit of our program is the peace of mind, because now a resident knows, if they need to, for just a few dollars a month, they are able to transfer the risk of these lines onto us, a company that's not only endorsed by the National League of Cities, but also the Iowa League of Cities. And then that way, if they were to have an issue, they just make one call to us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and we would dispatch a local licensed plumber or contractor to do the repair. So that is a huge benefit of our program, that we only use your local area contractors for all of our work. And we do that for a lot of reasons, but mainly, we wanna keep as much money here within your local economy as possible. But also, your local plumbers would be familiar with your city's local codes, and will make sure to do the work up to our standards, but also yours, which includes to get all of the proper permits for those repairs. And what happens is, if we did partner with the city, we would develop a contractor network that would specifically service your claims, and you all could be as much or as little involved in that process as you would like, where some of our partners will provide us a list of plumbers that they are familiar with, or already working with, or that are well-known here within the area, and some wanna stay out of it as much as possible. Either option works for us, but with all of our contractors, we go through a detailed vetting process, where we make sure that they have all of the proper licensing, all of the right insurance, they do not have any type of open complaints with the Better Business Bureau, but we also conduct background checks and drug screenings, because we just wanna make sure that it's someone that one of your homeowners always feel completely comfortable with coming to their home, but also inside of their home. And as for the important stuff, what we actually cover, we do offer three completely separate involuntary programs. We offer an external water line coverage, which covers, also covers well lines, an external sewer line coverage, which also covers septic lines, as well as an in-home plumbing. The two external products are pretty much set up identically, where we begin to cover those lines all the way at your city's mains, all the way to where they enter their home. So that way, if a resident was having an issue, whether it is a broken, a cracked, a leaking pipe, a tree root issue, a clog that needs cleared out, really anything that would impede the flow of those lines, as well as we do cover the thawing of frozen external water lines, a homeowner just makes that call to us, we send out that local plumber, and what the homeowner receives for their coverage is up to $8,500 towards each and every repair incident. So that is something that greatly separates us from other companies out there, is that ours is always on a per-incident basis. So we never have an annual or a lifetime limit, as well as we would never limit the number of incidents or claims that anyone can have in a calendar year. So again, that resident always does receive up to that $8,500 towards each and every repair incident, as well as we do not have a service fee or deductible, because we would never want, you know, a $50 or $100 service fee to deter anyone from actually giving us a call and getting their issues taken care of. And then as for our third product, that one is the in-home plumbing, and that was really developed by request of our current municipal partners, as it kinda was that missing piece of the puzzle. And this would cover any of the water, sewer, or drain lines that are actually in the home after the point of entry, that either may be broken or leaking. It also includes any lines that would be embedded under a slab or a basement floor, and coverage for the repair of clogged toilets. And this is very similar, where there is never a service fee or deductible, no annual or lifetime limit. We never limit the number of claims that anyone can have, and for the in-home plumbing, the homeowner always receives up to $3,000 towards each and every repair incident. the homeowner always receives up to $3,000 towards each and every repair incident. And we really do come to find that when someone chooses to enroll in any of our programs, they are a little bit more proactive about getting their issues taken care of, because you know everyone's always nervous to give that plumber a call, because they have no idea what it's going to cost. So now the homeowner knows the cost of determining what their issue is and getting it taken care of is not coming out of their own pocket. And then, as I mentioned at the beginning, a feature of our program is actually the revenue piece for the city. So what the city receives in return for their partnership with us is 50 cents per month per paid warranty contract. So essentially, if a homeowner did choose to enroll in all three of our options—the water, the sewer, and the in-home plumbing—then the city could receive up to $1.50 per month per household, and that is paid to you in the form of a revenue every January. And a lot of our partners do different things with this. Obviously, anyone could do anything that they want, and some just put it into the general fund. But we also do have some partners that have used it to help residents that may be having trouble paying a utility bill from month to month. I know some use it for different types of programs that they may already have initiated within the community, and one of our partners even uses it to help pay for their fall festival. So it's really, however you all see fit. And then lastly, I know the big thing everyone wants to know is how we market the program. So we only market by direct mail. So you never have to worry about us calling, door-to-door, anything like that. We typically have three mail campaigns per calendar year, but we never send anything out to a resident unless we do have the city's review and approval prior. So before each and every one of those campaigns, we actually send you a digital copy of that letter. We always want the city to know exactly what their homeowners are receiving, but also have input on what they do receive. Once we get the approval, then we let you know exactly when we would mail those letters out, and if for some reason we do not receive the approval, then we never mail to the homeowners for that campaign. So you all at the city here always have complete control on if and when a letter does go out. And just to give you a quick idea of what that looks like, the beginning really is that educational piece, letting a homeowner know exactly what their service line responsibilities are. But then it is an introductory letter, where the city would introduce this program to its homeowners, but it always clearly states that we are a separate company providing this, as well as it's 100% optional for a resident. It does go out with the city's either logo or letterhead. That way, your residents know that this is the program you all are participating in, but the bottom of that has our information: our logo, our phone number is the only one listed on that letter, so they call us with questions or to enroll. Same thing with our website. They can go there for lots of good information, or enroll right on our website, or they can return the bottom of that form right to us. So really, the city's involvement in the program is just in that introductory piece, but once someone chooses to enroll, all of the correspondence then is directly between us and them. We know that you all have more than enough going on here, so we do handle all the aspects. We do the marketing, the billing, the claims, and the customer service. And we are now partnered with over 600 communities all across the United States. We do have over 70 cities that we're partnered with in Iowa, and they're all listed in there for you. But a few of the close ones, we are partnered with Cherokee, Rock Valley, Spencer, Holstein, Sioux City. So I know I've rambled onto you all, so I'm sure you may have some questions for me. But with our program, I just really think by partnering with us, you're just making a program available to the homeowners that otherwise would not be.
On average, when you come into a community, what kind of participation rate do you generally get?
So it does vary greatly. Actually, Iowa has some of our highest participation rates all around the country. I do think it's because the residents across the state are responsible all the way to the main for both water and sewer, which typically is a more costly repair. But after that first initial year of three mail campaigns, it's typically between 8% and 10%. And then, and that three-year mark is where we reach that maximum penetration. Our national average is about 20%. It's typically a little bit higher in Iowa, though.
Okay. Any other questions for—after the three years, what happens?
So that's where we kind of get that maximum penetration, where we have some new people signing up, some other people canceling or moving or things like that. That's kind of where it fluctuates up and down after that three years. We continue—the program is available, you know, as long as the city wants to make it available to the residents. If the city chose not to participate in the program, any residents that have the warranty would still have the warranty, we just wouldn't accept any new residents—new enrollments.
Is there any option for the residents to participate without the city's involvement?
Our program is only available through either a city or an authority partnership.
To your knowledge, is there other competing insurances that are available?
I'd say—the only one really that is our competitor is—a—it would be Iowa American Water, but it's mostly—if they're your water provider, it's available.
So you're saying you're the only insurance that covers everything?
Most of the—some—there could be competitors out there. That's our number-one competitor, would be American Water. Most of them—some might just mail to the residents without the city's review and approval prior. By making ours available, that doesn't stop a homeowner from going out and choosing whatever they like, or not choosing ours. But I would say the most common misconception is if another competitor does mail directly, most of the time their coverage stops at the property line, because they don't take the time to realize that your residents need coverage all the way to the main. So your homeowners think that they're covered, and then they have that gap in coverage, you know, that is typically the most costly piece of the repair—that's street repair.
Tom, just a couple of things on that. There—a number of years ago, there was a mass mailing that hit Sheldon. It was not anybody that called and asked permission or whatever, but we received quite a few phone calls of people asking about it. I'm sure, Angie, you remember that.
Yep.
The city took no stance, because we had no idea who the company was. So we said to everybody that called, you know, "We're not saying it's good insurance or bad insurance, but if it's something you're concerned about, you better do your own research." I believe there are a few, and this is something every homeowner would want to check with on their own. I do think there are a few homeowners' policies that do offer some sort of coverage. Again, the details of that, I don't know, but I don't know that every provider offers that. So that's something that they would want to check as well. And I believe the Iowa Rural Water Association has a program available as well, but it might be only water lines. I'm not sure of the details on that. So there are a few options, but I think they all differ.
From the city's perspective, Todd, is there—what is—what do you see as the benefit of entering into a partnership of this nature? From the city's perspective?
From the city's perspective? I don't know that there—I mean, it's—you're supporting one—you—I guess you could look at it this way. If you support one that's—that is supported by the National League of Cities and the Iowa League of Cities, I guess you're supporting a company that is reputable, or you know is reputable, versus the mass mailing that we didn't know anything about. From a city's perspective, that's the only advantage I can see. Personal perspective, that's everybody's own gamble, right? How old's your service line? How far is your service line? Some of us have service lines that are 50 feet length. Others have service lines that might be 250 or 350 feet length, and they don't even know it. They've obviously got a lot more risk than the others. Is your house five years old, or is it like mine and built in 1910? And what's been done to the infrastructure in between? Makes a difference as well.
I guess the other advantage I would see is just the education, making people aware, because, like you were saying, typically, something goes wrong with one of those services, and the city gets the call, and then they find out it's—
We'll still get them.
Right.
We still will.
We still will. But there will some that have to be educated. Do we have a—somebody that actually has experienced—a Cherokee—former Cherokee resident that experienced this himself? Would you care to share that story?
So when I became the city administrator in Cherokee, Cherokee had this program in place, and I signed up for it simply to be a team player. I didn't really believe in the program, and I kind of thought it was a waste of money. And about a year and a half later, we had a major water line issue in the middle of winter, and it would have been very expensive if we wouldn't have had this insurance. And based on the research that I have done, I'm pretty confident that we're not directly competing with any local—with any local insurers. There are some that do have insurance, but involves deductibles, and there are exclusions, and this is a good program that I think we can—we can and should offer.
In our packets, there is a letter from the Iowa League of Cities. I just want to read one paragraph. This is written by Alan Kemp, the executive director. He says, "The league has chosen to partner with USP, a home-served company, because of its outstanding national reputation. USP is a Better Business Bureau-accredited business with an A-plus rating, and they maintain a customer satisfaction rating exceeding 98%. This is the only protection program endorsed by the National League of Cities, multiple state municipal leagues, and over 500 municipalities in North America." So the credentials, it seems to be, are there. What is it you were looking for at this?
So what we actually do, we look for the city to enter into a marketing agreement. That really lays out the pricing of the program for the resident, the scope of coverage, lets you know that we never mail anything unless with—the unless we—certainly it's put into place to indemnify and hold the city harmless.
It does provide you the access to the city logo as well, right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So you would use your marketing materials with—carry a city.
And that's what we send over for your review and approval.
Any other questions or comments?
So Mike and I were having a sidebar here as the attorney, and his recommendation and mine is to authorize the city attorney to proceed with review of the service agreement and bring this to future city council final action. Sound good?
Ashley, one question before they act on that. Typically, once the marketer, do you have the product in place?
Typically, somewhere between eight to 12 weeks. A call where we go over all the details. We begin customizing that letter, and then get that to you for your review and approval. It does—that's our average, some approvals, but that's what—that's our goal.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
What are some of the—are there any exclusions that are typical?
We do not have any type of pre-proper working order at the time of enrollment. You're eligible to enroll, but we do not go out and inspect the line. The damage yourself, so.
How would one do that?
Like if they were digging up their front yard to—to plant something. It's happened, but—
So the child plus—
That's covered.
That's why I thought I would do that.
Yes.
How about, like, for rental properties?
So it is eligible for rental properties. The homeowner has to purchase it on behalf of their renters—
Okay.
—because they're the property owner, or—but it does have to be—have a single service line. It can be like a duplex or a triplex, something like that.
So it's still available if somebody had rental property could still—
Correct.
—participate in the program?
Correct.
Is it residential only? Yeah. Let's move on this. Just want to hear what Mike suggests—the suggested motion. One more time?
I think what Sam had stated was that there'd be a motion to authorize city attorney to review, and then take final action or approval of the marketing agreement after I report back.
Okay. Still move. Support for that?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Thank you, Ashley.
All right, moving forward.
I'd like to review the draft ordinances and set the public hearing, and first reading for Mid-America Gas and the discussion at this point. You want to take the lead on that, Sam?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. And you're—in front of you, and I gave copies to the media as well, is the updated revenue projections from Mid-American, and, you know, this has been a little bit challenging to pin down, but we've got the multiple exclusions there listed, and it's approximately $4,300 for each 1% for the schools, because you have approximately 11 exemptions. This was—the final version of this was made available just today. In addition to that factor, we also have the revenue purpose statement, which needs some additional review of Sheldon passed a measure regarding the local option sales tax. And part of the local option sales tax was to—was to go towards property tax relief. Well, the—you cannot have on a utility bill, gas and electric, local option sales tax, and the franchise fee. So in the revenue purpose statement, it's important that we use a portion of the franchise fee revenue to offset what would have otherwise come from local option sales tax. And that takes a little bit of time to work through, and so we think we're close to the final version. But in—in the interest of making sure that we have it right, we recommend a continuance. And those two factors that I just mentioned then lead to the ability to fill in the blanks in the ordinance, which include how much you would put in for residential or non-residential. So that's where my recommendation is at this point, would be to continue the ordinances. Mike, I don't know if you have anything to add. I know you've been working on reviewing the ordinances themselves. Is there anything that you'd like to share regarding that?
Yeah, I have looked at those, and we're set up to discuss those in greater detail. I wouldn't say that there's anything in them such significance that they're going to change the path that the city's on, but there are some details we would want to discuss before final passage—or final presentation, I should say.
Any other comments or questions at this point?
You've had the revenue purpose statement. It's gone through various drafts of how broad or narrow it is. I think what you're hearing is a recommendation to take action on that at the next meeting. So if there's a C prior to that meeting, it'd be good to know sooner than later.
The revenue purpose statement, as it stands now, is the most recent version?
So under a revenue purpose statement, you can cover various categories. The categories, generally speaking here, are property tax relief, which is where the opportunity to make up the lost lost, so to speak, happens. The category of public safety, which of course is the impetus for the franchise fee. And the other category noted would be construction, reconstruction, et cetera, of public grounds, and the acquisition of real estate needed for that. And the driving force behind that was the noted potential future need of additional things for public safety purposes. Correct. So those are the categories. There are additional categories that could be included legally, but those are the categories we've gotten direction on so far.
So that last sentence, talking about construction, reconstruction, repair of public grounds, that is public grounds specific for any of these public safety entities we've been addressing earlier? any of these public safety entities we've been addressing earlier?
Then there... If you would look at the statute where the categories come from, which is three eighty-four point three A, there's a list of various permissible purposes. One of those includes various things, including public grounds. And this category includes the acquisition of real estate needed for the construction of public grounds. The intent, again, being to make it broad enough to cover potentially the acquisition of real estate to build, for example, a fire station. Not saying that's what the plan is, but that's what the intent was.
Or to like renovate the old wastewater treatment plant, which is being converted to fire department use. That would be an appropriate use under this revenue purpose statement. And it's... And it's okay if you want to approve, you know, what's in front of you, and the media has it too, is only slightly different than what's in your packets. Micah just had worked on this with me, and he had recommended a couple of additional changes. So this is almost identical to what's in your packet, but it's been updated just a little bit to clarify.
Yeah, most of the recent work has been on the property tax relief issue.
Right, on that tax relief.
But we know that's one percent. Correct?
Yes, but there's certain entities that's...
Were these eleven entities, were they paying that local option sales tax before?
No.
Some things go in, some things go out.
Okay.
I guess, you know, in addition to what Sam and Mike have been talking about here, which are valid points, I think clarity is a good enough reason for a continuance today on this. But I also want to also add to that is that I think we, as a council, need to understand and be able to communicate well to the community exactly where these funds would go, so that the community has a assurance and knowledge that what we're collecting here, what it's going to be earmarked for. And I know that we have these issues about land through the fifteen-year plans that were submitted to us by the services about all aspects of what they feel they will be needing in the future. But on the other hand, I think there's a set amount of revenue that we're going to be able to get out of this, and I think we need to be very clear to the public exactly where that's going to go the best till we can. We're going to be responsible in that process. I've been working and trying to establish, if we just look at different categories of what's been proposed, what those would actually add up to. And I would like to be able to share that with the rest of the council, but it's not ready yet. And I'd like to have a little time to do that, because I think where there's going to be, just like in budgeting, there's going to be decisions that need to be made on where... On how much revenue we can gather and where that revenue is going to go, so... And I think that's important, that, like I said, that the... That the residents know exactly where this is going, so...
I think a motion to continue...
So are you willing to make that in form of a motion? In terms of the continuance?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Yeah. I'd move that we continue the discussion on this topic till the next council meeting.
Okay. With information from you... Is there a support for that motion?
Support.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. All right, moving on then to approval of the plans and specifications and also authorizing bid solicitation for Crossroads North Phase One. Is that your baby Kurt or what do we got?
Can borrow one?
Thanks. I don't have enough paper here to do.
Yeah, you start off. To the record, state your name, Q.
What I handed out was a brief summary of the project and then an overview of the project or what's going to be included in this project. This is infrastructure, sewer water, storm sewer street for the first phase of the Crossroads North Business Park. This is located just on the north side of Highway eighteen. The entrance location is directly across from the existing Crossroads Drive to the Crossroads Drive in flood industrial park area. Just a brief summary of the utilities. The sewer and the water to services property are on the south side of Highway eighteen. Those will be extended through the Highway eighteen right-of-way. The DOT is required, those to be cased throughout the right-of-way with the majority of that being board, so we don't disrupt the highway traffic. They continue along the crossroads. We did run a stud for the sanitary sewer east along Highland Drive, and one of the considerations we had in the design of the depth of this is continuation further to the east for future property. We brought this or kept this vein deep enough to conserve the majority of the property straight to the east of this with sanitary sewer. We've been working with and through the DOT, better part of a year now, on the various phases of the highway crossings, the turn lanes, and storm sewer outlets. So we've got all the final information to them in and are waiting for the final review on it. But the highlights of those, so last year about this time, we initiated a traffic study to see what impact the traffic for the subdivision would have on Highway eighteen traffic. The first was a right-turn lane onto Highway eighteen for southbound Crossroads Drive traffic. So it'll be a right-turn lane along there. There's radiuses for that, or designed for the large semi trucks. Existing Highway eighteen is approximately forty foot wide, three lanes plus four foot for a buffer stripped in there. Currently, this is all painted as a crosshatch, no traffic in the center. A portion of that, the striping, will be removed and re-stripped with a left-turn lane off of Highway eighteen into Crossroads Industrial or Business Park. And then the final piece was, the traffic study came back that was marginal whether a right-turn lane would be needed. They supported construction of a right-turn lane at this initial construction phase if the city so desired. I brought that information to the council previously, and it was decided to go ahead with the right-turn lane. So this long section here is the right-turn lane. This is a little bit different type of right-turn lane that you'd normally see. The DOT is moving towards that. It's... It's... Provides better site clearance. If you have traffic stopped in the right-turn lane or traveling down the right-turn lane, that the people stopped at the stop sign here can see traffic all the way back here. So this set so that the traffic here, if there's turning traffic here, they can stop safely without having a T-Bone collision. So as a result, this is considerably more pavement than normal right-turn lane. This intersection is going to look totally different than it does now when this is completed with all... That was one phase of the DOT. The sewer and the water connections are touched on those. We've covered what the DOT has requested for those crossings. And the final piece to the puzzle was storm sewer runoff. The entire subdivision kind of drains to the southeast, to the location of an existing box over underneath the highway. And they requested that we provide onsite detention for that stormwater runoff, so that the water elevations would not be increased because of the development, business commercial development, which potentially can have a lot of parking lot, which can increase the peak flood, peak stormwater runoffs considerably. So this detention pond is designed so that up to, including the hundred-year flood, will not increase the flow through the culverts or the water elevation that's backed up on the north side... Excuse me, on the north side of Highway eighteen. And on... Excuse me, on the final design on this, we had some challenges, because existing roadway is considerably higher than natural ground to the north. And DOT culvert's a little bit undersized by their standards. So what was happening when I was trying to size this pond is that it was having a hard time getting enough retention in here, because the water would back up in the highway ditch from flows that didn't come through the subdivision and... Yeah. It had to be to the point where I'm filling up to... Our pond height has to be about elevation of the existing road. So in order to do that, we had to fill in on Lot Seven, so that we didn't have a pond in here. As a result, there's a shortage of dirt on this project and...
I'll jump in on a couple of things there. First thing I wanted to clarify is this pond is going to be large enough to retain all water within city right-of-ways. Every lot sold after this, and Kurt and the Development Committee are well aware of this, after sold after this, will have to have onsite retention of their own. Had we not done that, that entire Lot Seven almost would have ended up to be retellable acres in the development. Secondly, since we are short on dirt, the lot to the west of there, Lot One, which is the land that Co-op purchased, that land has excess dirt, a fair amount of excess dirt. So Micah has drafted a draft agreement for us that Pat and myself had reviewed. Kurt has sent that on to the Co-op folks. We did get a response back today. The minor details need worked out, but those are no deal breakers in there that we can tell. So what we're trying to get done is a situation where we need dirt, they have extra dirt, we strip it off their lot. Had we not sold Lot One already, we would just do that as part of our project. But since we had a client that, you know, was wanting that lot and we wanted to lock them down, that's why we sold Lot One. Don't see it as a deal breaker, see it as very beneficial to both entities, and I think they do as well. Just, like I said, a couple of minor details. So we'll continue to work on that. The sewer and the depths, as you know, we have an option on some of the ground to the east. I just wanted to clarify that at our current sewer depths, we'll be able to service all but the easternmost, like two-hundred-and-eighty feet of that thirty-five acres bi-gravity sewer. So what you could end up with is a situation where there's one, two or three acre lot that has to have their own lift pump that pumps up to our gravity. We have that now in a couple of homes in town. We also have one business that does that. A Bryan County implement actually has their own lift. They pump up the hill and dump in by fairway. Didn't see that as a deal breaker with, you know, one small area. So Pat and I went over these plans pretty in-depth together, and I think we've got something pretty good. This first, this initial phase is really expensive for the amount of land that we're able to open up. I... I made it a little worse when, I guess, when I added some reinforcement and some... Over some culverts. We also made it a little better when we made a couple other modifications, but I think we have something that we could approve. What we'd be looking for for you guys today is approval of the plans and specifications as they are, and give us the authority to solicit bids. And knowing that we would not solicit bids unless we get the dirt agreement in place and we get the final approvals from the DOT. If for some reason we wouldn't get one of those two in place, we would come back to the council at that time. The reason we're trying to do that is we've had a fair amount of delays in this project just to get to this point, and it'd be nice to be able to pull the trigger and get a project out to bid and not have to wait for the next council meeting over and over again, since we're so close at this point. So from there, if there's any questions from Pat or myself or Kurt?
So looking at the calendar, bid opening to be determined, council consideration to be determined, but completion yet this fall?
Well, the...
Is that optimistic or...
It's doable. It's doable. Perfect world, Greg. In a perfect world, the DOT would call tomorrow with agreements saying, yep, you're good. We'll get the dirt agreement signed by the end of the week. Next week, we advertise for bid, we come back on May one. We have you set a hearing date of May seventeen. We open bids May thirteen, you guys award a contract. That's in a perfect world, okay? Unlikely. Probably first part of June is more realistic getting out to bid. It's going to have to be... Pat and I had a conversation yesterday on the phone. It's going to have to be a late fall completion to be reasonable. Is that fair, Pat?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah. That's assuming we get out to bid in June. If we don't get out to bid in June, then we're going to have to talk about extending a completion date into next year, if it gets too much later, or be willing to pay for the flip side, and I don't know that we are to that position yet.
So is it fair to say that you guys have been doing a lot of work with the DOT to get it to this point? And that's why we're in almost dismay on this decision?
A year's worth of work.
Yeah, the D O Ts have taken a very long time. This is one of those projects, from my standpoint anyway, that started out as a little tiny molehill and has turned into a big old mountain.
Yeah.
And just the way it is. Ideally, in a perfect world, we'd have brought this to you in February, and we'd have bid it in first part of March. But just didn't happen.
How large a track land is that retention pond?
Excuse me?
How big is that retention pond as far as...
It's a hundred-and-fifty foot wide and a lot depth, which is, I think, three hundred and change.
Four-foot sidewalls, something like that?
Yeah, I think that's to the top, fifty, I think, one fifty by hundred.
I don't know, I'm looking.
Acre plus.
Anything else?
I make the motion to approve the plans and specific project moving.
With those two...
Yes.
That would allow us to solicit bids, assuming we come to those two agreements.
Yep. Because I think we need to keep this project rolling. We've got potential business out there, I think, that wants to get going, so. And we've waited on the DOT for a while.
Yeah, that's part of it. It's not just the DOT, there's been other things, but...
The traffic study took quite a bit of time to get going and get that information to the DOT.
Yeah.
That's what started a year ago, was the need for the traffic study.
Because the other thing we'll have to get in place here, and we're having discussions on, is there's a preliminary plat for this area that was approved, but we need to get to the, we haven't even approved a final plat yet, so we need to get that done as well. So we'll be working hard to get that done, is also to try to get that done until you, hopefully, buy a bid opening.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, is there support?
I would support.
Okay.
Red's motion.
Roll call, please.
Chip Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, next item up is to set the public hearing date for the maintenance contract for development and minimum assessment agreement. Do you want to add any information on that?
Pretty straightforward. Asking to set the hearing for May 1. The only thing between now and then is on April 24 at 4:30 PM. And here, there is a meeting of the Board of Adjustment for a stack height variance for a maintainer, and that is a, decisions that Board do not come to the City Council. It's anticipated that it's a very routine request, and received a very positive message of support from one of the neighbors this afternoon on that. Obviously, we can't commit to the Board, but that's the only thing that could be potentially an issue.
And so that is currently scheduled then for May 1 of 2019, our next council meeting?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions or concerns? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Okay. City managers report.
I don't have anything to add, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anything from you guys over there?
I just want to make one clarification, because I just realized something that was in your packets. So the cost estimate on the project that was in your packets was the one that was provided to you in December, but since that time, we decided to add that big old turn lane, and there's been some other changes. So the subtotal is not 580, it's 843. So I don't want somebody looking at this and then being shocked when they see the actual price later.
You're talking the Crossroads Project?
I am, Crossroads North. I just noticed in the packets that...
Today it's 885.
Yeah.
We just got handed out.
Oh, okay, well, there's one included in...
Yeah, that...
That was the old one.
Yeah. I wanted to make sure that that wasn't, nobody was going by that one.
That was like in 2018.
Yeah, that's old information.
That was from December, yeah.
Okay. I just didn't want to, I just didn't want to have somebody yell at me when we come back with $800,000, $900,000 project, and you thought it was going to be $550.
Is that all you got then, Todd?
That's it.
All right. Any comments from the councilman on the left? Anybody on the right? Then, I think we need to have a discussion yet about the council vacancy and a direction regarding timelines. In light of the petition, your position, does that change anything in terms of how we fill the council vacancy for anyone?
I think you need to go down the special election, because if you do have an appointment, you'll have the potential of another special election after the special election for a council seat for, till the November election, which would only be for, you know, six months. So unless we're willing to run that risk, I say throw it in the mayoral election.
Combine them.
Okay. I'd agree with that. I believe that, you know, the public has spoken, I think we'd follow suit with that other position as well.
The only, one question I have is in terms of, you know, previously, we had letters of interest by a certain day. You may have to...
Not if we have a special election. We have a special election.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Fill out nomination papers by...
You're right.
The date and time indicated.
Yeah, because I think they can follow the mayor's suit yet, can't they? For election petitions and that.
Would the council be the same as the mayor for filing for...
I believe that's correct, right?
Yes.
Yeah, next Friday at 5:00 PM.
So could we use that for the council seat?
5:00 PM, at least 27 signatures for each seat.
So we could adopt the same thing for the council position as well.
If you direct a special election today, our city clerk will notify the county auditor, and it'll get set.
Okay.
And then that's what the motion or direction would be, is for her to do that as to both
Does that have to be a separate motion from the mayoral?
I think since we've had on the original agenda just a discussion on the council vacancy, and you had indicated one path, and you're changing that path, and because of the special election request on the mayoral development, I would just deal with it separately. It's going to have the same end result, but it'll make for cleaner minutes in the long run.
Okay.
So, if I might?
Yes.
So first motion would be to accept the petition for the mayoral election, ask the city clerk to proceed with her set of the election. That'd be the first motion.
Okay. Shall we do that?
So move.
Okay. Support?
Support.
All right. Motion in a second. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, and then your second motion, recommended motion, would be...
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the receipt and acceptance of the petition for the special mayoral election, recommend a motion to change course, to not have an appointment for the council vacancy, and to proceed with having it be filled by special election under the same process as outlined for the mayoral vacancy.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Take one of those as a support, one is a motion, one is support. For the comments?
Just so the public is aware, on the council seat vacancy, given that there's no need for anybody to petition for the special election, it will happen.
And also additional information, that council seat is going to be a four-year term?
No.
No?
No.
That'll be till November, right?
Be till November.
End of the year.
Till the end of the term.
Be through January 1 next year.
That goes to January 1, yes.
Then they have to run for election in November again, for the large seat.
For mayor, it's the entire two and a half years remaining in the term, which expires January 1 of 2022.
All right.
So has a motion been made?
Yes, motion made.
It has support?
Yes.
It has support?
Yeah.
Okay. Tom, Sean, and Pete took care of that.
Okay.
All right, roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
I'm going to have to move over.
The petitions are available in the office.
All right, I think we are through our agenda, except for one item, that being the motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
All right. Support?
Second.
Roll call.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.